Good evening. We call to order this regularly scheduled meeting of the Bristol, Virginia City Council today, Tuesday, April 26, 2022. Please join us for a moment of silence. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We appreciate everyone joining us this evening. We've got a couple of big topics on our agenda tonight. Just wanted to start off by saying for the record, Vice Mayor Osborne is not here physically, but he's joining us over the phone tonight due to a medical condition. So he is on the call now. Are there any comments from the Council?
Just a couple of things as we get towards the end of the school year. Let people know earlier this evening, Bristol Rotary Club honored the teachers of the year. I didn't, wasn't able to stay long enough to find out who they were, but they honor one elementary teacher from each of the schools on the Virginia and Tennessee side. And, you know, we're very fortunate to have those student teachers. But we're also very fortunate for our students. I saw earlier today, the guidance counselor at the high school tweeted out that there are 19 students that will graduate with either a certificate or an associate's degree from Virginia Highlands Community College before they get a high school diploma. And that's over 10% of the graduating class. So that to me is a remarkable achievement, and I applaud those students, but I also honor the teachers as well as Rotary is tonight that help them achieve what they have.
We're going to move on to matters to be presented by members of the public, non-agenda items. So these are for folks who signed up, and this is for non-agenda items. Just a quick reminder, everyone who would like to speak has an opportunity for three minutes to speak. If you, when I call your name, if you come up to the microphone, to the podium, and state your name and your address for the record, when you begin speaking, the green light will come on. When you're about out of time, the yellow light will come on. And when you are out of time, the red light will come on. So we ask you to be courteous of your time and everyone else's. For non-agenda items, the first person that signed up is Ms. Glenda Smith.
My name's Glenda Smith. My address is 616 Pearl Street, Bristol, Virginia. And I know Bristol's got a lot on their plate right now, but one thing that's been kind of a constant source of irritation for me in the three years that I've lived here is the number of inoperable, unregistered, and non-taxpaying Tennessee vehicles parked on our streets and around the city. And in some neighborhoods, fully 50% of the cars are Tennessee tags, and they live there full-time. And I feel like it's a huge source of lost revenue for the city. The inoperable and unregistered and uninspected vehicles, I think, present a danger to the city. They're loud, they're obnoxious, they're falling apart, they're unsafe vehicles, and I just wonder what the city, if anything, is going to do about that.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. We'll definitely work with, that's been a topic of discussion for a little while, so we'll definitely work with city staff to see what we can do to try to do it differently, to do it better.
I figured the money issue would push it over the edge if anything.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Ms. Smith. The next person that signed up for a non-agenda item is Mr. Michael Pollard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the Council. My name is Michael Pollard. I live at 140 Ashley Drive. Some time back, I asked concerning the recycling location on Lee Street. I haven't heard any update on the question that I asked at that time as to when it may be reinstated or when it, considering my understanding is part of the property is city-owned, but it has been encroached upon by someone else. And it appears that that encroachment has increased with additional space now marked no trespassing and that any vehicles will be towed, even though it's city property and it's the city recycling location. I would like to hear as soon as possible, because I know you may not be equipped to say anything about it right now, and the city manager isn't currently here, I would like to know where that stands because right now, after hours, our only option is to go to the ball field for cardboard recycling. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pollard. The next person that signed up for public comment is Mr. Joel Kellogg.
Joel Kellogg, 1204 Maryland Avenue, Bristol, Tennessee. Did you miss me?
We have.
So, come here tonight to ask two things. One, based on the recommendation of the expert panel, I want to stress that word "experts", that you immediately cease intake of waste into this landfill. Okay? You know, we've talked about this for a long time. You're at about 20, maybe 25% staffing for this facility. You don't have people to even put cover on it right now. This needs to stop. So we would ask, please, let's start there. The second thing is, I want to talk about credibility. So, you know, I've gotten to know way more about city government and landfills here in the last year, year and a half than I ever expected to, ever wanted to, to be honest with you. But I don't know if y'all are aware, there is a, there is, it seems like an atmosphere of suppression on this side of the line, where if somebody wants to speak out, especially business owners, that all of a sudden, they just clam up. So, you know, this is, this is America. We don't, we don't do that. We have, we have a right to free speech, and your business owners are putting money into this community just the way that any other resident is. That, that needs to stop, and you all need to focus on that. And I see Mr. Eads isn't here today. I don't know if maybe you took our advice, you know, if a team is losing, you don't fire the team, you fire the coach. So that would be a very positive start, I think, to trying to put this community back together, to start to heal this community so we can get back to life as, as I remember Bristol was. I'd just like to, like to ask you for your consideration moving forward. Reach out, listen to your residents, okay? Don't, don't just take the advice of, of your expert. Listen to the people who put you up there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. The next person that signed up for public comment is Ms. Elizabeth Behringer.
My name's Elizabeth Behringer, 900 Pennsylvania Avenue, Bristol, Tennessee. I and many others consider the report that was released yesterday by the panel of experts about the landfill a win for the community. We finally feel validated that what we've been pushing for and requesting for a long time is, in fact, what a group of nationally renowned experts is also saying should be done. But it's only a win if the city of Bristol, Virginia actually follows these recommendations. It must be obvious to everyone up there today that the community's trust in the city leadership has eroded considerably over time. Since that trust is lost, you must now do all in your power to overcorrect it and to rebuild that trust, and this is the opportunity to do that. Based on the report, it's time to let go of the idea to continue to accept waste and fill the quarry up to the top. It's time to realize that the right thing to do is to close it and cap it off at the current height. It's time to step up and provide relief efforts to affected residents. Join your sister city and these other organizations in the community that have provided much-needed relief to citizens. It's time to provide better, transparent communication to residents. The path to rebuilding trust is not to withhold information, but to allow us to see what's being done in a timely manner. You must operate with utmost integrity to ensure that the citizens you serve will be able to live in this community again like they once were. We've all been disappointed time and time again, feeling like we have to fight for ourselves and plead for the right thing to be done and for our lives to get back to normal. And we shouldn't have to do that. We've gone, when we couldn't get that through coming to the city, we've gone to the EPA, we've gone to DEQ, we've gone to legislators on both states and as far up to the federal government as we could. And we shouldn't have to fight that hard to be heard and to have something done about this. I'm not a resident of Bristol, Virginia, but your leadership directly impacts my life in this community, and I want to have faith that Bristol, Virginia is going to do the right thing. So please, I ask each of you up there to, I urge you to see to it that all the recommendations from this report are followed and that you provide a way for citizens to have a voice in this moving forward. We're all depending on you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Behringer. The next person that signed up for public comment is Sam Weddington.
I'm the Reverend Dr. Samuel Weddington. I'm the senior pastor of First Presbyterian. However, I'm speaking tonight as a representative of the Bristol Area Ministerial Alliance of 501(c)(3) registered in Virginia, representing ministries and churches in both Bristol, Virginia and Bristol, Tennessee. And Jackie Knopflin, so good to see you. She is the president of that organization. And on behalf of BAMA, local ministers, and those who've been advocating and pushing a long time, along with partners like Virginia Interfaith Power and Light, Sierra Club and others, we first of all want to thank, and we're preparing a letter to that end to VDEC, thanking the panel for this report that's being produced and, that has been produced. And I'm just coming tonight to talk about recommendation number 10. And it's very explicit there, and it's something that can begin tonight. Recommendation 10 is that an active community outreach program be established to talk about, communicate strategies, provide status, progress reports, and receive feedback. I think as you've heard, that's absolutely critical, and you're going to need partners to do that. I think a lot of the churches in the area can, can do that, and we want to be your partners. We want to commit ourselves to actually helping the city get funding at the state and federal level as well and advocating because we know you cannot do it by yourself, and that's okay. We want to definitely support the city in that effort. But as part of recommendation 10, I'm going to give you the first piece of critical feedback that you're going to hear from members of the community, and I'm going to sound like a broken record, but I need you to hear it. It is time for you to step up and provide relief, direct relief efforts to affected residents. I mean, when we get together and we talk, whatever this number 10 looks like, that's going to be at the top of the agenda. And again, I'm not just speaking for myself, I'm speaking for other ministers in the area. We've been doing this, we've reached the 1,000 purifier mark, we have just been laboring to get that done. We need help, and your residents, both in Bristol, Virginia and Bristol, Tennessee, and I know you can't help them directly, but residents need help. This is not a "we told you so, we won" moment. This is a time for the community to come together and constructively work together for results, all right? And the results are mitigating this landfill, getting you the funding to carry out these recommendations, and bringing relief to affected residents. And we want to help you with that. But we need you to step into the fray and dedicate yourself. If we have to live with this for the next few years as it's being worked on, we're going to need you helping us bring relief to residents. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Weddington. The next person that signed up for public comment, you want to sign up? Give me one second. The, the next person that signed up is Ms. Sarah Surf.
Sarah Surf, 115 Silver Drop Lane, Bristol, Virginia. I'm here just to speak on myself and a few of my neighbors in the area that couldn't make it tonight. We are all suffering. And if you don't live near it, and you live farther out, sometimes you won't see what we're going through or smell what we're going through. And it is affecting everybody's health right now to some degree. And I have small grandchildren that I don't even feel like I can invite them over to my home. And I've only lived here for three years, and I have to tell you, when you can't open your windows on a beautiful day and let fresh air in, something's wrong. Something's terrible wrong. And you feel that you can't have your grandkids come over, your families come over, you don't even know if you can barbecue outside because you don't know what's coming on your food. You can't let your dogs out, you can't go for a walk in the morning because you don't know when it's going to hit you. It's, it's, something's got to be done, and I'm hoping that since you got the report back yesterday, that you will, in fact, do what we are asking you to do and fix the situation as best you can because people are going to move, people are going to get out of this town. People don't want to live here anymore. I've talked to quite a few people, and they, they said, it's not the Bristol we knew and loved. And, you know, truthfully, if I'd known this three years ago, I wouldn't have moved here. And I just hope you do the right thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That was the last person that signed up for non-agenda items, but Ms. Knopflin, you came in late, I know, so would you like to go ahead now?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that, and I apologize for my tardiness, and I have been out for quite some time, working on my own business. Jackie Knopflin, 143 McArthur Circle, Bristol, Virginia. I'd like to piggyback on what Reverend Sam was making mention of. And keep in mind that the ministers are basically trying to give those purifiers out because we don't feel that there's anything else that we can do. Pray, you know, and, and do what we can. And so a lot of people have donated and given to the purifiers. We hit 1,000, like he said, not long ago. I do realize that you and one of the others, and even some of the others, live, you know, near it, have suffered it, know what it is that people are going through, and I do believe that you're doing all that you can. Our next move would be to work for finances and funds that we can help get down. And I know you all know more than I do as far as that's concerned, but we are working to get the funds down to where we can do something about the landfill, and hopefully that we can open up that communication. That's something that I had pleaded with you not long ago, that we open up a communication and, and let's not fight one another, be, be like that since we all are suffering. Sir, that's the one, one thing I wanted to talk about was the landfill. The other thing I want to talk about is that I've had five minorities sign up on Indy.com for the jobs that are available here at the city, and we've had one get hired. I'm a little impatient person, I don't know how that could be, but I, I, I don't, I mean, I would think that we're in a hurry to get these jobs filled and so forth. I know you have to do your research and all of that, but I don't know the process. So what I have done is I've asked them to call in down here, and I don't know who to direct them to, but I think it's Scott or, I ain't mad if you call you, Jay. But, but what they're doing is they're leaving messages and saying, you know, I'm available, I'm following up on my application, things of that nature. So I, I wanted to make mention of that. If you would, check into that for me and get back with me. Usually you can tell whether or not they're minorities or not, it's called by their names. Well, these fellows you are, and ladies, you won't be able to tell. So I don't know how, you know, but everyone is, hopefully, in the process, is beginning the opportunity for the jobs that are opening here. The other thing is, the last one, is that Johnson, we, so Douglas, not you all, but the, one of the councilors, so Douglas School, but I'm concerned about the park in the back. Do we still own the city park in the back of Douglas?
I believe, I believe.
Okay, it's Charles Brelove Park.
It is a city park.
It is a city park. Okay, there is some work that needs to be done there, some dangerous slides and things or whatever the kids are playing on. And so I know they're building them in Johnson Court, play area and so forth, but the, the kids are still playing over there in that park if we could get that fixed, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Reverend Knopflin. That was the last person that signed up for public comment for a non-agenda item. I believe everyone else is for the next item. So we are looking for a motion to adopt our regular agenda as we move into that.
A move to adopt the agenda is presented.
Second.
Second.
Okay. I heard a second from Ms. Nave first, and I heard it from Mr. Osborne, too, on the phone. So we have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
Nave? Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wendell?
Yes.
Farnum?
Yes. The first item of our regular agenda is public hearing for proposed fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget. I hereby open the hearing, and we'll move into public comment first. The first person that signed up for public comment for this item is Mr. Mike Fleener. Dr. Fleener.
Thank you. I'm Dr. Michael Fleener, 11205 Oak Grove Road, Bristol, Virginia. And I'm going to read my comments so I don't miss anything. I would like to address and give further education on a proposed budget item that I feel was neglected. This issue can prove to be a threat to the safety and general health to the citizens and visitors of Bristol, Virginia. The item I'm talking about is leaving the increased stipend for the advanced life support providers in the fire department out of the budget. As OMD, or Operational Medical Director, for the department's EMS division, I'm tasked with assuring all EMTs at various levels of education are appropriately trained and certified at their chosen level of practice. All the providers operate under my license. There are 43 EMTs in the department, that's all the firefighters. That's a requirement to be a firefighter. Presently, we have four at the advanced EMT level. The next level up is 11 intermediate EMTs and five paramedics and one RAN. Basic EMTs can start oxygen, splint extremity injuries, stop bleeding, check blood sugars, and operate an AED. The ALS providers can do all this, plus start IVs, evaluate EKGs, and administer certain meds. At the advanced level, they have eight medications they can administer. All this is under protocols from the Regional EMS Council. The intermediate level can administer 40 different medications, and the paramedic level, 56, all under the hospital direction after communication is made by the paramedic. In addition, paramedic EMTs can intubate both adults and children, give narcotics, and insert chest tubes to promote lung function. Training for ALS personnel takes 1,200 to 1,800 hours for classroom, hospital, and hands-on training. Presently, the ALS EMTs get a $2,000 stipend in addition to their regular pay. Many other states and regional agencies provide stipends, depending on their level of qualification, from $6,000 to $10,000. We're competing with all these agencies with the providers. All of our providers are nationally certified. We've lost four this year, one through retirement and three through other opportunities. And the fire department expects to have over 4,000 calls this fiscal year. 80% are EMS with over 50% requiring ALS. And we've proposed in the budget to provide a $7,000 stipend for the paramedic level, $4,500 for intermediate, and $2,000 for advanced. Both Chief Armstrong and I feel this is an investment in providers to give the security and hold on to the ones that we have, and hopefully stimulate others to promote to a higher level. If we lose any more ALS providers, we're not, no longer going to have an ALS service, and that will decrease our, our revenue recovery from over $300,000 a year to by about $100,000. That's what our billing company says. And I've always wondered where this money goes anyway, because since we've had the ALS service, this hasn't directly come back to the fire department. So in closing, I'd like, or I'd want to remind the council that we can't create these ALS providers at the drop of a hat or a magic wand. It takes over two years to educate, train, and certify ALS providers. Adding these additional funds to the budget for the ALS providers will pay off for the city, the citizens, and projected visitors for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Fleener. The next person that signed up for public comment for this item is Ms. Melissa Roberts.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council members. My name is Melissa Roberts. I'm a property owner in Bristol, Virginia, and I am here representing Bristol's Promise, which is a nonprofit organization that serves both sides of the state line. And what I wanted to talk to you about tonight is one of the budget items that's been left out. As you all know, except for Ms. Nave, I've come here before and talked with all of you about adverse childhood experiences and how resilience can offset that. So we know that one in four adults have at least one adverse childhood experience. But did you know that having one adverse childhood experience can increase substance use disorder? It can double it, it can quadruple it. And so we have got to build resilience in our community. And what I have found is that by doing away with the diversion program, that is not building resilience. What you're doing is you are increasing that trauma in people, you're going to see an increase in substance use disorder in our citizens and our population. I am no expert in that, you're going to hear from other people here tonight who are, but I encourage you all to, to consider what Judge Johnson has said, and, you know, continue the diversion program for a year, do a deep dive into that data, and see what that return on investment is, because I can assure you that in the state of Tennessee, it's a $5.2 billion annual economic impact for ACES. If you increase this trauma, you're going to see higher numbers than that. We don't have the numbers for Virginia just yet, Virginia has just started collecting that data. And I encourage you all to look And I encourage you all to look at the data. If you don't have it, don't just shut it down. We know that substance use is an issue in our area. We're having a fentanyl awareness day event at the high school on Thursday because it's an issue. And if you do away with that diversion program without really looking at that data, you're really doing a disservice to the community. So thank you all for your time, and I hope that you will reconsider doing away with that and listen more to the experts that are coming next.
Thank you. The next person that signed up is Mr. Jerry Wolf.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council and city staff. Wanted to thank you for the opportunity to address the council tonight about an issue that I feel is important to the administration of justice here in the city of Bristol. It's come to my attention that the 2022-23 city budget that was presented recommends the total elimination of the JASP program. I'm not sure how familiar the council is with regard to the JASP program. That stands for Judicial Alternative Sentencing Programs. But kind of wanted to bring that to your attention because if this budget item is totally cut out the way it's recommended, it's going to end this program, which the umbrella of that program covers about four different programs. The first one that I would like to bring your attention is the Work Release Program. Back in 2018, Judge Johnson and I were approached by the city manager with regard to the fact that at that time we had a jail population that was way exceeded what our jail could handle and had asked if the judicial system could come up with some kind of an alternative to help bring those numbers down. And as a result of that, the judge and I had been looking at a program that Russell County runs that was a work release program. And we were able to establish that with the help of city council, putting some money into that so that we were able to do that. And so that entire program would go away. In addition to that, under the JASP umbrella also is the drug court. Now, the drug court has existed since 2009. And during that period of time, the last 13 years, we have assisted dozens of individuals who have attempted to break the cycle of drug addiction and at the same time keeping those folks out of the jail so that they don't go to jail, they receive, they come to court and come to the program about five days a week. They come to court one day a week and they receive counseling through Highlands Community Services and that kind of thing to try to help them to be able to break this cycle of addiction. In addition to those two programs, JASP also includes a GPS monitoring effort which has allowed some folks who qualified to be put under house arrest rather than going to jail, as well as folks who have serious medical conditions that the jail isn't exactly able to handle, to have those people to be able to serve their sentences like on a medical furlough. Or people who are in jail who have to have medical procedures done at the hospital, of which the jail would get, or the city would ultimately get billed for, to allow those folks to be put on a GPS and to be allowed to go out of custody to be able to go get their medical treatment. In that way, the city would not become responsible for that. I have a handout here, since time is limited, that I would like to present to the council to help me do that. What this, and let me give credit where credit is due. Ms. Arnold, who actually runs these programs, is the one who has prepared this handout with figures on here that shows what the city has expended to have these programs over the last four years. And over the last four years, if you look down below that top line to the middle, it shows the number of participants that we have had in these programs. And there were 91 people that went through the Work Release Program. There have been 51 participants in the Drug Court Program. There were 19 participants in pre-trial GPS, as well as six people who were in the program because of medical issues, those kind of things. All these people we were able to keep out of the jail during those periods of time. There's 167 people there. And those 167 people, had they not been in jail, had they not been out of jail, would have cost the city, well, they equate to, let's look at that first up at the top, the incarceration days that were saved by those people not being in jail was 30,392 saved jail days. And as you all are probably more aware than I am, the, the cost of incarcerating an inmate is about $39 a day. If you multiply that by $39 a day, the savings to the city was $1,185,288. That shows that the net savings to the city far outpaced the amount of money that the city put in. I see that my red light is on, so let me just say that I really do hope that the council will reconsider that because not only are three people going to lose their jobs, but also the people who benefit from these programs will also be hurt by the fact that those programs are eliminated. Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. The next person that signed up is Ms. Linda Austin.
I'm a resident of Washington County, Virginia, but I'm here to talk on behalf of the Appalachian Substance Abuse Coalition for Prevention, Treatment, and Recovery. It's a long name, so we refer to it as ASAC most of the time. We are a regional coalition that covers the 13 counties and three cities of far southwestern Virginia. Also here is the Director of Hands and Feet Ministries, which is a jail and prison ministry based in Damascus, but we serve the same catchment area. Both ASAC and Hands and Feet has been privileged enough to work with the folks that you have in the programs here, the diversion programs. We have had the privilege of seeing a lot of lives restored. And I could tell you that the majority of justice-involved individuals in our region have children. So I'm asking you to consider the ripple effect of the decision that you get ready to make. Whether it's good or bad, a lot of people are going to be impacted. There's a young lady here that's going to speak to you tonight that graduated from the Drug Court Program. And she is now a board member of Hands and Feet. Her life has been completely restored because a lot of people need the structure and the accountability, and they need the high expectations that a drug court brings to them. We have been involved with folks in the ankle monitor program, the work release, and we have seen front row seats, we have seen lives restored. I'm going to tell you, this pendant that I'm wearing says, "Love the one in front of you." And I would add to that period, no matter what, because as long as there's hope of lives restored, I, I don't really think we have to worry about the money. If we're doing what's right, I think that's going to come. So I encourage you, when you make your decision, to think about the lives that are being changed, not just the ones in front of us, but the next generation and the next. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person that signed up for public comment is Mr. Jason Pritchard.
Thank you, Jason Pritchard, 508 Robbins Circle, Bristol, Virginia. I run the Peer Help Program for Valid Health, which has an alternative sentencing program. I'm really confused when I got this email because we see that the state's lowering from 85 to 65% the cut, the number of people incarcerated, and this would be doing the opposite, so it kind of seems counterproductive. And then when we talk about taxes and things, that's like Mr. Wolf was saying, it seems like we're working in reverse. But more importantly, I want you to hear from Jennifer here, who graduated from the Recovery Court, and we just put her to work, working for us, and so it's a real transformation that's taking place.
My name is Jennifer Harris Duggar. I graduated Bristol City Drug Court in December of 2019. In the amount of time from then to now, a little over a year. I am a board certified CPRS, a Certified Peer Recovery Specialist in both Tennessee and Virginia, MRT facilitator, smart recovery facilitator, living free facilitator, a community health worker. I'm in Hawkins County Memorial, working with jail email, getting people to treatment in Green County. I have a nice home and full custody of my son. That program saved my life. That program gave me a life, and to take it away is an injustice to this county, to the city. Thank you.
Thank you all. The next person that signed up is Ms. Sabrina Owens.
Hi, I'm really nervous. I've never done this. Sabrina Owens, I live at 705 Chester Street. I'm here to speak because on the outside looking in, I'm sure that, I'm sure when it comes to budgets that you need, you may need to do this, remove this, remove that. What I want to say to you is that I was an addict for over 22 years. I ended up doing about 10 years incarceration, in and out, in and out, in and out. I never received any kind of counseling, therapy, help in any of that span of time. When I went into Drug Court, I went through Drug Court without a hitch. I never had a hitch because God met me exactly where I needed to be. He put me right there, the people that he, that I needed, he put right in front of me. Now, don't get me wrong, the spirit's what got me there, and he's what got me through, but the tools were there, and those tools came from Drug Court. That's where it came from. So I'm five years clean now, and my life is restored. Y'all don't make me nervous. I'm really nervous up here. But what I want to say to you is that it's, if you don't know about Drug Court, get involved. Look behind the scenes, ask someone that's been in there. It's real easy to see that people fail, and people are going to fail, and they still fail. It doesn't matter that they fail, it matters that those seeds are planted. And even if they failed Drug Court and they ended up being incarcerated again, those seeds are still planted. It's up to the spirit to water that and grow it. Just because you can't see that doesn't mean it didn't do any good. But there's those that are ready, and they meet them right there where they're at, and they, they grow, and they get their life back. Thanks.
Thank you. That's the last person that signed up for public comment for this item, so we'll move on to staff comment.
Thank you, Mayor and members of council. This, this item is the public hearing for the proposed fiscal year 2223 budget. Section 15.2, 2506 of the Code of Virginia requires one or more public hearings on the budget. The city manager presented the recommended budget on April 7, 2022. It is available online and under the Finance Department. The advertisement for the public hearing appeared in the April 17, 2022 edition of the Bristol Herald Courier, and the clerk, Mr. Lamy, has posted the notice in the lobby of City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you. And just a quick question for you, Ms. Bradlin. Can you give us a reminder of the dates of the upcoming budget calendar regarding the...
Sure, yes. Let me pull the dates up.
Okay. Sorry to put you on the spot.
Okay. Tonight is the public hearing. The first reading of the budget ordinance is scheduled for May the 10th, and the second reading is scheduled for May the 24th.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So I go ahead and hereby close the hearing for this item. And for the next item, which is similar, the public hearing on fiscal year 2223 budget appropriation ordinance. So I hereby open the hearing for that, and no one else has signed up for public comment for this item, so staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and members of council. This is the public hearing on the fiscal year 2223 budget appropriation ordinance pursuant to section 10.04 of the City Code of Bristol, Virginia. Council will hold at least one public hearing on the appropriation ordinance. Notice of the public hearing for the fiscal year 2223 budget appropriation ordinance was published in the Bristol Herald Courier on Sunday, April 17, 2022. Once again, the clerk has posted that notice of public hearing here in City Hall. The ordinance is available online with the meeting agenda. Copies have been provided to council, and a limited number of copies were actually printed and available at the meeting tonight. Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you. So we'll go ahead and hereby close the hearing for this item. The next item is ordinances, first reading, an ordinance to create a zoning map amendment for property located at 780 Gate City Highway. Nobody signed up for public comment for this item, so staff report.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. City staff had received a zoning map amendment request from Mr. Mike Felty of Felty Properties LLC to rezone his property, which is located at 780 Gate City Highway. Currently, the property is zone R2, which is single and two-family residential. The request is to rezone the property to B3 general business district. As you can see here, I have the site on the presentation there. On the left is the, just showing the parcels, and on the right is showing the area, which is how the zoning is in that area. Now, across the street from the property on Veda Drive has been rezoned, which was action that was taken by this council within the last few months. It just hasn't had a chance to update the zoning map quite yet. This item was advertised in the Bristol Herald Courier in conjunction with State Code on March 28, 2022, and on April 4, 2022. Adjoining property owner notices were mailed on April 4, 2022. A sign was placed on the property on March 28, 2022 announcing the rezoning. Joint public hearing with the city council and planning commission was held on April 12, 2022, and the planning commission voted six to nothing to recommend the zoning map amendment to the city council on April 20, 2022 at a call planning commission meeting. There have been no previous zoning map amendment requests for this property. However, a special use permit was granted for this property by city council on December 9, 2014, so that a professional office could operate in the R2 district. That is its current use, Felty Insurance Company. The future land use map designation for this property is for regional commercial, and the size of the site is approximately 2.18 acres. The existing uses of the prop, the border of the subject property are residential to the southwest, a hotel and future casino to the southeast, offices to the northwest, and bank across Gate City Highway. There is a mix of residential and commercial uses in this immediate area. The majority, however, of Gate City Highway is Zone B3 and is business. As I mentioned before, the property is a mix of residential, commercial, and office uses. As far as consistency with the comprehensive plan, the 2017 city comprehensive plan addresses future, future commercial development of the former Bristol Mall site. However, a casino was not in the works when that plan was approved. Objective number one of the Commercial and Employment Area Framework Plan encourages promotion of commercial reinvestment along Gate City Highway. Objective five encourages leveraging Bristol's many, unique assets to increase tourism. The future land use map, as I mentioned before, shows the property as a regional commercial. The future land use map, as I mentioned before, shows the property as a regional commercial. This land use designation is to encourage establishments that draw from a regional consumer traveling across, along 81, as opposed to the local commercial land use that's intended to provide daily goods and services conveniently to nearby neighborhoods. I'll just go through the staff comments real quick, and so as far as local traffic goes, Gate City Highway itself is currently running well below capacity. However, as everyone knows, the future traffic with the addition of the casino and other associated businesses certainly to increase that number. Traffic impact analysis, TIA, has begun the scoping process. We've met with both the consultant that Hard Rock has hired and with VDOT to go ahead and get those pre-scoping documents taken care of, so that the data collection and analysis can begin within the next month or so. I anticipate that study to be finished somewhere around the end of summer, beginning of fall, so then we'll have some, some hard numbers on what we anticipate going on, out there from the casino, and what, if any, types of improvements that they would recommend. Should be no adverse impacts on natural resources. City staff would require all environmental-related permitting be obtained and approved prior to The amendment should have no impact on the local school system or the parks and recreation system. Bristol, Virginia Utilities had no comment in regards to water or electrical utilities. As far as emergency services go, I did have a comment from Eric Blevins, our fire marshal. He said that the location has hydrant coverage that would be consistent with commercial district distances and flows. Road frontage and access are consistent with commercial districting, and the change would be acceptable. Public transit, currently, public transit does not serve this area. That could change in the future with the development of the casino, but it should have minimal impact. Government services, garbage collection services will be addressed during the site plan review process. The police department offered no comment on the application. Mac Chapman, the Economic Development Director, offered the following comment, that there has been a business operating out of this location for years, and with the development of the area currently, it only makes sense to allow it to be rezoned B3. Based on the information presented in this report, staff recommends approval of the request for a zoning map amendment.
Okay. Well, I'll just jump in. Thank you, Jay. I don't have any questions myself, but I'm on the planning commission, so I've been in those meetings as we've had discussions, but does anyone else have any comments or questions for Jay?
I have one question. I think I asked this the last time, but I just want to make sure, get it on the record. Did any of the residents that live nearby have any comments?
I received no comments from the residents yet, no.
Thank you.
This would be for first ordinance.
So we are looking for a motion and a second for the first reading of the ordinance, and that can be by caption only?
I'll make the motion that we approve or have the first reading of the ordinance by caption only.
Second.
Okay. Is there any other council discussion?
Well, my thoughts are, and expectations is, that that whole area is going to grow. We need to look at and talk about rezoning that whole entire section right there, to where we don't piecemeal this one lot at a time. We can grandfather in all the residential side of things over there and rezone it, and that way we're positioning ourselves as a community to, to move forward without all this delay. So I would like for the council to talk about rezoning that whole area.
Ms. Wingard, I believe we, you will see that, those requests coming in soon. I, you know, the, we are due for a comprehensive plan update this year, and that is going to be the main focus of that, and looking at rezoning all of that all at once, I think, is on the table in the near future, sir.
All right, thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? If there are none, we have a motion and a second for the first reading of the ordinance by caption only. Clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Nave?
Yes.
Osborn?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Farnum?
Yes. Okay. And a first reading of the ordinance by caption only. Would you like to...
Sure. Ordinance number 22.4, an ordinance by the city council of Bristol, Virginia, approving the request by Felty Properties LLC to amend the city zoning map from single and two-family residential, R2, to general business district, B3, for property described as 780 Gate City Highway map parcels 222111A, 234, and 227118A.
Okay. Thank you. The next item is first reading of an ordinance to update City Code, Section 50-242, definitions and Section 50-32,3, permitted uses in a B3 district. Nobody signed up for public comment for this item, so staff report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This was an item that we discussed at the last city council meeting, to try to kind of reach a consensus on how the council wanted to proceed. Just to refresh your memory, in July 20, 2020, Virginia authorized the use of medical marijuana in the Commonwealth. They established pharmaceutical processors as the official cannabis providers, and the process, so these are the licensed facilities that grow, extract, and dispense the products. Virginia allows one processor per health service area, and Dharma Pharmaceuticals in Abingdon, which used to be in Bristol, is the licensed processor in our area. You can see there at the bottom left, the area in blue is our health service area, so it encompasses Bristol, Abingdon, Roanoke, Lynchburg, so it's a very large area of Virginia. In addition to these processors, the legislation allowed for up to five cannabis dispensing facilities to be established per health service area. This facility is where someone would pick up their medical marijuana with a cannabis card issued by the Virginia Board of Pharmacy. So you would go to a physician who has signed up for the, to be licensed by the Virginia Board of Pharmacy. They give you a prescription, you go in just like a pharmacy, get your prescription, it would last, I think, up to 90 days, and you just go back, so. Currently, we have no definition in our city code for pharmaceutical processor or cannabis dispensing facility. So if a facility wanted to locate in Bristol currently, they'd have to go to the planning commission for a similar use determination, which we would most likely allow, similar to a pharmacy, which is allowed in B3 districts, B2 districts. So they're, they're allowed in most of the business districts that we have. It's also possible that this particular use, the cannabis dispensing facility, would expand its operation to sell recreational marijuana once it becomes legal, which at this point is due in 2024. If this does take place, the number of recreational marijuana licenses would be capped at 400 statewide, so it, it does stand to reason that there would be some in this area. We don't know for certain, but it would make sense. So if a medical marijuana facility wanted to switch over to recreational, we would already have that in a place that we think might be a good spot for it in the city. So adding the definition and locations for use would allow us to better control the future development of any potential dispensaries. So the recommendation, the consensus we received, I believe, from the council last time, was to allow them in a B, both the pharmaceutical processor and a cannabis dispensing facility in a B3 district located a minimum of 500 feet door-to-door from licensed daycares, public and private schools. And as you see, there's the map that shows the locations in the B3 districts that are within 500 feet from a school or a licensed daycare. Of course, the one on Euclid could possibly go away with Stonewall, depending on the Stonewall Jackson situation, I believe it would probably go away, but currently, I went ahead and had it on there for you, so. That's all, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Jay. Does anyone have any questions or comments for Jay? So we are looking for a motion and a second to have the first reading of the ordinance by caption only.
I move that we have first reading of the ordinance by caption only.
Second.
Okay. A motion and a second. Is there council discussion?
I, I just want to thank Jay and the planning commission for bringing this up. I know we've talked about it probably two or three times, that, and one, you're looking ahead, trying to anticipate what could be coming, but also appreciate the time you took to, to look at all of our different concerns about spacing and how close and different proximities, and what, wasn't exactly what, what I advocated for. I'm all right with this, I think, because it does, if you start getting too restrictive, it really limits where you could put it. And I think, and I appreciate you doing that at the last meeting, having those maps. It really kind of brought that point home, so, thank you.
If there's no further discussion, we have a motion and a second, so clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Nave? Yes.
Osborn?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Farnum?
Yes. Now, a reading of the ordinance by caption only.
Ordinance 22-5, title, Amending Chapter 50 Land Use, Article 2, Zoning, Division 3, Section 50-32, Land Uses, and Division 18, Section 50-242, Definitions of Code of Bristol, Virginia, addition of new definitions.
Okay. Thank you. The next item is our consent agenda. What's the pleasure of the council?
A move that we passed the consent agenda is presented.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Nave?
Yes.
Osborn?
Yes.
Wingard? Yes.
Farnum?
Yes. That's the last item of our agenda. If there's no further business, we stand adjourned.